All right, I'm gonna move us on to the next piece here. So I'm just gonna give just a really quick 15-second overview and then I'm gonna let these guys kinda take it away. But, so we have Wolden Marka-Johnson back again. They're gonna walk you through some components, talk about some line items, those kinds of things that you would ask for previously. Just kind of giving you a little bit of a timeline. So, ideal, perfect world, we leave here tonight with you having made a decision of one question, two questions, and whatever that looks like, what is in those questions? And then we make a motion, we vote on those. It does not have to be ballot-specific because I will bring that verbiage back to you in January for our work session. And that's where you would formalize the ballot language. Does that make sense? The deadline to file that is January 24th. So if we can finalize that officially at our January 9th meeting, that gives us plenty of time. Depending on how your conversation here goes, but there's kind of the timeline. And if we need to adjust based off of where you are, we can, there'll be a little bit of wiggle room. But, that would be kind of the home run if we could get to a place of decision tonight. If you can't, then we can come up with a plan B. But, all right, take it away Randy.
All right. So as the direction Shannon laid out last time, we took off question two off the discussion for right now. The fields, the gyms are gone, right? We're just gonna focus on question one, which would be 25 and a half million was what that pertained to. So, in order to really get into the details of what that, what those particular items were, we just took, simply took what we had before, broken out, and we assigned dollars to them. We had them before, but we just didn't, obviously with question one, you couldn't really put all that detail in the referendum. But we're trying to give you a sense of what those particular components are. Start talking about what the track is compared to the synthetic turf. We wanted to break those apart. These, it's an important note here as well, all these numbers contain all the escalations and all that. As it did before, again, it's just broken out, it's a single number. One point of clarification, this has not cost a dollar. It was just a factor of putting zeros in on the percentage and it just carried into a dollar. It's the, we thought we, we didn't, we talked about last time is the, if we didn't do synthetic turf in the football field, I wanted to be very clear, there was nothing to do in the football. You weren't gonna repair any fields, you weren't gonna repair any grass or drainage. So we did add a line here to take care of that task if that was desired. It's probably about a $400,000 task is my guess, based on that. But we just put a zero down there for now because we wanna make sure that number is fairly close to the 25 and a half that we started with, right?
So that would be, in lieu of synthetic turf?
Yes.
If you want to make corrections?
Just taking the current field, kinda ripping it apart, put drainage in and redoing the field with grass. So again, baseline where we started from, nothing's changed, just more detail. As we move along this spreadsheet here, this is a, I wanna say overly complex, it's not really overly complex the way it is. As we go through, we can work out a number of scenarios if you want to scoot over there a little bit. There we go. So these A through F indicate different scenarios, different ways to skin the cat in terms of how to get to that. If you wanna stay at 25, here's the entire package that's laid out over there. If you wanna get down to closer to 21 million, here are the components that go into that number to make it up. And these are not our direction, that's used aboard to make that call. We're just trying to lay out some avenues of how to get there and, again, give you those tools to do that. But this is, you know, playing around with a lot of things. Maintenance, we kept all those components there because we've heard loud and clear, as you have, that maintenance is the key thing we wanna keep, maintain. So in every scenario, we have those included. As you get into the stadium piece, you got the track, which was the safety component, the reason you haven't used a track. That stayed fairly consistent there as well, then we got into synthetic turf and kinda mixed some things around. But then again, the PAC, we didn't move a lot with that. Because again, we felt this was the key part that we were hearing, as well as the PAC was the other thing that was missing. But the track and stadium components were the things that felt we had a lot of. There were a lot more discussions the last time we met about that than there were the other two. One important note, as discussed last time, the gentleman from School Perception brought up, the PAC they built in 2016, I think he quoted eight and a half, nine million?
Nine point eight.
Nine point eight. If you do escalation or inflation from 2016 up to now, it's 25, you ever take a percent? That's where that number's at. And honestly, the inflation for some of the materials is even higher than that, as Bruce you know as well.
Yeah.
And that auditorium number has costs for renovating the multipurpose room if you're not getting plays in there to make that. So it's actually a little bit lower.
Yeah. Yeah, this second number here is that's the remodeling component of the school.
That line two, the 600,000?
Yes.
That was doing work in a, okay, I was, couldn't remember if that was included or not.
Yep. But again, important to note, all this was, it's been consistent with what you've seen thus far, what the public has seen. Just a little bit more detail and we're breaking it off that way. We did have some other questions, we can certainly, I think there was some comments about the bleachers last time. This price here includes repairs to the existing bleachers, not replacement. It's repairing what is currently not safety or safe and things are just, that need to be repaired. Replacing the grass field with synthetic turf, again, that, you know, if you do the synthetic, you replace the existing field. If we do nothing, there is nothing done to the football field.
That doesn't include the maintenance costs? Correct. Because we also discussed that, like if you didn't do anything, the maintenance costs that we put in yearly to keep up the field and do those pieces.
Yeah, and Tim is right, I know Tim's just working on that?
I have it.
You have it, okay.
Yep, it's about just over $30,000 per year.
Okay.
And that would be soccer and football field, respectively.
To maintain them.
Mm-hmm. And if we didn't do the synthetic turf, you could not play the soccer games necessarily on there. Would it be like a dual field?
Correct.
Can you share that document at all?
Yeah.
It's just really hard to see it that far away.
Sure it is. I've got hard copies too if you wanna look at it.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Do you know what the compaction of the football field is right now?
I do not, no. I don't know if it's ever been talked about, gone.
We didn't do any soil borings or anything like that on it since that wasn't part of what we're talking about.
You're not gonna get alive with some of that.
Oh, Bruce, you know better. I can't, there's nothing secret here.
It's the green and the white that's important. You can't tell what it costs either.
Usually when we have discussions like this, I wouldn't have you focus on the dollar amounts, right? So I'd really have you look at the item.
Components.
Because that's the scope and that we talked about last time, that's where, that's what you're gonna be able to get down to that 22 million. You have to start looking at scope items and saying, what do you not wanna do?
Yep. Yeah, if you're gonna focus on the big number, then you just gotta start looking at those components, what it costs.
How much? So if we do the track and keep the grass field, and then say, okay, five years from now we wanna do synthetic turf, is that, is there anything that goes on to the track that would be disrupted?
Basically, we just, we'd have to put a little bit of protective cover into whatever your synthetic turf budgets would be in the future just to make sure that you're protecting the track. A lot of times, you try and do them at the same time just to minimize that. But we've done it where we've done a track one year and five years later they're.
Yeah, it's a constructibility issue at that point.
But you can, it's not, we don't have to undermine the track or any of that. You can leave the track, just keep protecting going across.
Does it get more expensive?
At that point, if you have to protect the track and use smaller equipment?
Well, obviously, the inflation piece will hit, right? So it'll be more expensive, just pure dollars to, year to year. I would guess it would probably be a little more expensive as well, just the pain of going over an existing frame track.
There's some kind of focus would be. I'm talking about millions of dollars.
Right, incremental.
What, to remodel existing multipurpose space? Can you just kinda quick highlight what's included in that?
Sure, when we were going through planning, we talked about that commons area that was built in the last referenda and trying to make that part of the cafeteria commons, much like you see at other new high schools. So it would be opening up that space a little bit more, making a little bit more of a direct flow in and out of that space. Right now, because it's a multipurpose room and has performances, you have to be able to black out in that area and have the lights go down to dark. And so, we would just basically make it feel like it's more part of the overall commons.
So if we didn't do anything to that space in year 12, point eight million, that one, we wouldn't have to add anything on to just move through that?
We would just say what you're using it to do.
It would just stay as is, we'd keep it as lunchroom and use it if we needed for something else. Again, I mean, no.
We wouldn't take the bleachers out, we wouldn't do anything with them.
You just basically leave the spaces and then?
It's probably an important note though, you wouldn't fix the PA system in there and the other stuff that's.
It'll be one of those.
You could always do it if you, if it's not dependent on the auditorium structure. If you're not doing performances in there, that would be the, you know, that's the impetus for, you know, we should do this at that point.
For that room, I'd love to hear like Andrew or Shannon for that. Do you, like, is that, with that room, is that a need? Is that a want, like, do you think that that's something that's necessary to remodel that space? I'm not super.
Go ahead, Principal Newman.
Who knows, yeah, I was at a conference last week when they, or last time when we popped on, and they talked about a lot of research coming around around how aesthetics impact and flow, not, has more of an impact potentially on academic and learning and mental health than what we may have thought in the past. And so, as we think of the flow and the aesthetics of the space and usability, it does get clunky.
Because right now, it's just that closed-off area, correct?
Yep, yep, right. And so, like, for instance, we're trying to make it a special welcoming place to have, like, student of the month breakfasts to welcome students and family and staff. And then it just, right, aesthetically appeasing in the flow of it. It gets clunky when we're really coming and going. And so, yeah, those barriers restrict that and then make it a supervision hassle as well when we have different exits rather than having some open flow.
So would it have more uses, I mean, if the auditorium was added, it would have more uses and more functionality?
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, right, I mean, as we, as all talked a little bit, like, the work we're trying to do in terms of looking forward with STEM and innovation and interdisciplinary, like, we need some flexible space. And that would be a huge help, like, that would be actually happen too.
Thank you.
Additionally, if we're working in new high schools, a lot of times, the common space becomes the lobby, the gathering space for games, for performances, for everything else. And right now, that is the first thing that you see when you enter the building and it's a walled-in area. So we'd make that sort of central core for the building, really an extension of what we did in our referenda.
Wold Auditorium?
Pardon me?
Wold Auditorium?
Wold Auditorium? Clark Wold died and, I guess it's candid.
Any questions at all? I know you can play with the numbers all day long.
Actually, Bruce said that is what we do at terms seating is usually like one of those big ticket donor items. When you find, when you have a donor that's saying, what can I contribute to something where they wanna have it be visible? Seating's gonna be one of them. When Alexandria built their high school around Minnesota, that was, you know, one of the things that they focused on from the donor. So, there are items in the auditorium that you can look at if you had donors in.
Yeah, we've done that, we've up and forth like, same thing, all the seats were bought.
Yep. Yeah, you have opportunities on the stadium as well, right? With the scoreboard or press box, or whatever you can conjure up.
Oh, sorry, again, the repair existing grass fields, do we have to add like a $400,000 line?
I could make that, I just didn't wanna deviate from the.
From the original.
Original referendum piece, but that would be an extra piece, I can throw it in there for you and give it to you.
So that's something we should add on to the bottom of all these numbers then?
It's, it's an option, right?
You could take the synthetic out, you would add $400,000 for the grass.
I need, did need my first action, Bruce, to come in here and throw a bunch of money at you and say it was some more money, all right? You're trying to get down, trying to help.
I got it. We have to do something there.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think we're, you know, this incorporates inflation, what we've seen over the last number of years, couple of years. I'm really hoping, material prices are starting to come down a little bit, so I'm hoping that's a trend in the right direction. And, you know, we get more, more use of the dollar too, going forward. We have to project what we, what the current trend is right now.
In the last month, we've had a few very large projects bid and they bid right at or just below budget from where inflation was, which is a nice change to not have them be coming in over where they're at.
Yep.
So that's good, you're trending in the right direction.
And does this take out the flow of traffic? You know, some of those talks that we've had, I think it was around one game with, I think it was under maintenance with some of the pieces of pickup, drop-off, the flow of traffic?
That was removed prior to, we looked at it again, it wasn't in question one, it was in a, I think it was removed earlier in that.
Okay.
It was a fairly big-ticket item for a call.
Shannon, do you have, do you have, or does anybody have a tax impact then on this total amount?
Do you wanna speak to that?
So it would be, since it's still April, there's a very similar range to what we had on 25.5, which is four, four cents. But, the only thing that could be changing is the interest rates that we're gonna be borrowing at. So possibly a little higher, but if you, I would say just generally, very similar expectation for tax impact where we're at, but the same range. If you have a target, we can give those back pretty quickly to you.
There was actually another, and we discussed it last week or so, as we've been, including Summer's, together. The intent was to get down to 22 million because that was what was surveyed. But that was also surveyed along with, the tax impact would be for that. And that was higher than what actually the 25.5 million tax rate ended up being. And so, I think that's a question maybe for the board is, if the tax impact was already lower, it wasn't the 22 million people who were planning to, it was what was put out there. If 22 million at a tax rate of X, and so that might be part of your consideration.
So can you refresh me, on a hundred thousand dollar value, what was the impact on the 22? Isn't that a question?
Just four dollars for 25.5 million.
Four dollars per hundred thousand on 25.5.
I believe that's what it is.
Annually, not monthly.
Any other question or discussion?
The only other thing I ask is from, maybe back to your question to Shannon and, I mean, the PAC. Can you speak a little bit, how big of a need is it for us in that high school right now? Could it wait two years? Could we do old maintenance, the track, get operational and do that in two years? When it comes to STEM, when it comes to what we need, where does that auditorium fall?
So, right, I live in a different world down here Rochester and seeing, right, and I get that little fraction of the district when they're losing 5,000 kids. And then right now, you multiply that by $8,000 for all sorts of reasons. Or, another district I worked in where they're top 5% academically and the lowest, second lowest-funded district in the state. And right, they're losing staff, they've had to cut up to 10 years of tenure, which is a rarity. But, it's a, it's a real thing and I get it that you don't wanna play, like, keep up with the Joneses, but it's a real thing when Shannon talks about people leaving, right? And if our, if our district's goal and mission is to present different pathway options for different kids as a holistic opportunity, we don't have a functioning, functioning or even aesthetically appeasing and sound-approved area. We're going to lose kids to those that have that because they want that opportunity. And, so with that, sure, like, we can try to make anything work, but it's a real thing that families are school shopping. And again, as we're hearing a little bit, like, as a district, I believe, and as a building, we're making steps to raise that bar academically. But, but there's more that I'm hearing coming back now to an education other than just the academic piece they want, the artists they want, the athletics they want. And they will go somewhere else. And so that is a worry of that. And then it does put a constraint on our ability to be flexible with learning and opportunities when the space isn't feasible. And so that physical space can put a boundary on how quick we can progress with that as well.
I can't wait in my opinion.
I agree. There's nowhere left to go and get the middle school drama to heaven and all of the up-down and this and that and all of those pieces, to give our kids to be able to grow what's coming, you know, in the high school, to be able to put on the performances, that they have to be so stinking creative to try to set a stage. You know, the stage at the elementary is what it is, it's still not big enough, there's not still enough sound and lights to be able to easily hear the kids. And we, they do a great job making it work with what we have. So I would say that that is something that needs to happen. I don't believe that space would go unused hardly ever, just based on the number of performances that we have going on and trying to.
And the thing I would add to, right, like the scoreboards that are in the gym, I think they paid for themselves over a couple of years or the advertisement that continues to happen. And we'll start to get those spaces, like an auditorium or, I know we've talked to some spaces that, right, we're not even talking about this, but if we were to put a dome over a field and to have that space, that is all sorts of income now that pays for itself over time when people want to use our space. So it's not just money spent for our kids, but it opens up opportunity to bring people in our building and rent that space out as well.
I think that's a huge point, because I think that's been a huge piece that has been kind of, we haven't talked a lot about with an auditorium. I mean, I know New Richmond, St. Croix, having a daughter in dance, they play thousands for a weekend to rent out. And I think we've kind of not really talked a lot about that, but there is a lot of peace. Think that you're saying like, yes, this is a cost, but it could be a little revenue, or not maybe revenue, but money to help pay for it as well. Because it's not just, oh, a couple hundred dollars to rent out an auditorium for the weekend. It's, it's thousands and it's a hot commodity too. And I think that that's kind of been something that's really, we haven't talked a lot about that, that piece. Because I think it opens up a lot of the talk that we've, we've talked about with our community, opening up not only our school district, but opening up with the community, community piece as well. It's not just used by just people doing plays, but by our dancers or by community members coming in to do activities or things as well. So, I think that that's something really important to include. And if we do go forward with that piece, something important to advertise per se as well because they're not hard to, they're, they're hard to get. It's hard to get space like that, I think, to accommodate large groups. And it brings other people in to see our, our facilities as well. Just my two cents. I think if you have any of those, any of the music folks in here or Becky Olson in here, they would stand in the center and tell you, study after study and research after research about aligning academic achievement and arts and music and math and speaking and on and on and on. And I think that space will become a community space, as Lori Lin is presenting and in that small venue over in New Richmond, and bringing in $60 a seat. And speaking to St. Croix Falls who just finished their auditorium and talking about what their plans are to make that a community space in the small community. It's beautiful. It is amazing. And we're the last being standing, sitting in the small town of Somerset, with no community space where people can gather. It's not just about our students and our schools, but also about validated programs. Also having a space where the community can gather for many, many different purposes. It's something that we've needed for a very long time. And I'll piggyback off that with our athletics as well. I think a lot of people and a lot of the things I saw after our last failed referendum is that it's athletics. And I really, I really disagree with that. Because there's a lot of kids that, if, there's a lot of research out there that shows that kids that are involved in athletics, they, they do better at academics. They're more, there's a lot of pieces out there. And I think that when we look at this, we're looking at it sometimes narrow-mindedly with just, oh, this is just an auditorium or this is a football field and I, this is much more than that. And I think it's time that we kind of dig a little bit deeper at some of those pieces versus just presenting it as, here's our football field where, you know what? Those kids that are going out every weekend to play football are also kids that are in our high school as mentors and working hard at academics to be able to be out on that football field to go on to secondary options and other pieces as well. So. As Shannon mentioned, I think we have to move forward as far as deciding what, what is our next steps. And we don't need to come necessarily to a wording, but what are our next steps for January? So we can approve something to have wording or approve nothing. And I think it's, we've had now two meetings where, thank you guys for taking the time. I know that this is nights off of, with you and we've had multiple nights meeting with you. And I, along with everybody, appreciate all the numbers and time, but I think it's.
I'll just say, I came into, yeah, I came in tonight thinking, let's cut the auditorium, let's just get the maintenance done so we're operational. That last little bit I just heard, I think swayed me back to, you know, maybe this option B? Let's get rid of the turf, let's wait on the turf, but let's, let's get caught up. Let's get the maintenance done, let's build this auditorium, and then we're in a good spot, right? Where we can operate and we can, we can start to plan and look at the future and when the time comes to turf. So that's, that's where I stand in that, after hearing all this conversation.
I have some more questions please. Can you tell me why we need a nine-lane track? Can you hold a conference track meet with eight lanes?
No, it has to do, with the number of lanes is driven by what events you can have added from a track.
So a conference?
I don't know the specifics, we'd have to ask the A.D., but yeah, there's an issue with the types of events that can be held.
The types of events?
Yeah, like a conference event or a regional event.
Perhaps you might need nine lanes for a regional need or a sectional need?
Yeah, and I, again, I hesitate to be the one saying that's it. I'd have to check with Trent.
I'd say yes for those.
But for a track that you can have a conference meet on, I'm under the impression that we only need eight lanes.
I can tell you Trent would only recommend that we put in nine lanes to be able to have.
He does?
To be able to host, to be able to have a, what he would consider a fully functioning track and stadium. He doesn't want, if we're gonna do it, he doesn't want any limits on, well, we can't host this, or we can't run this event, or we can't X, Y, Z. He would tell you as our athletic director that if we're gonna put in a track, we're gonna do it, let's do it and put all the lanes in. I get my question to piggyback off that, like, I'm assuming you guys have put in tracks recently, maybe? I mean, I truly don't know this, are people putting in eight lanes?
No, we haven't done one for long. I would add to, we were talking about the cost of doing turf later or repairing later. The cost to put a ninth lane in later would be, you'd be rebuilding the track. You wouldn't be able to come in and just go, oh, let's throw this one in now. So, if you're going to do it, it's now, it's time to do it.
What would you really say, I mean?
Pardon me?
What would you say?
You wouldn't hardly notice it, I don't think.
Because you're gonna do all the soil work and the surfacing, I mean, it's really, it's a fraction of the cost to go.
And have you done any work on seeing if our existing grass fields need any improvement?
Because everything in the previous conversation was focused on synthetic turf, we didn't look at.
Right, so it's possible that there is, I mean, when, I've worked a lot, a lot of football games and our football field looks beautiful. And I think it's been very well maintained over the years. So it's possible.
That's a totally different question than what we were asked to look at, so I don't know.
So I can tell you, Joe Hutter gave me some information about that exactly.
Yep.
Drainage is an issue in the corners of our field. Ongoing maintenance, it will have to be done because, it's actually funny what you just said because he said, it looks like if you're a spectator, that the field is fine.
Right.
When you're in it, like he is, he gave me a laundry list of things of, right, so the drainage, the reseeding, the rolling, there are dirt mounds that have to be flattened out, because now if you walk in the intricate piece of the field, there are mounds and hills. The corners are probably the biggest issue, but, so, I don't know if that's helpful, but he had shared that with me.
And just, so we sent thirty thousand dollars a year for maintenance with the football field, but then that doesn't include maintenance on the soccer field?
It was both.
That was both?
Yep.
And when we put in the new scoreboard in the gym, I think the plan was a five year payback to pay off that cost. How long did it take to pay it back?
It'll be around schedule.
Were we not ahead of schedule?
Possibly a little bit in the last year, I'm not sure.
And the proceeds from that advertising, could some of that money be used to help pay for a new scoreboard?
There's many ways to do that creatively. The scoreboard's in the gym. Donation by First National was the interest free loan. And then the fundraising was done by getting.
The advertising.
So certainly that's another, I haven't talked to any advertisers, I don't know how deep the pool is, and that's a discussion that we have to jump into.
Why are the bleachers upgraded to a million dollars? What exactly are you upgrading? I mean, you said you had to do some maintenance. Are you telling me that our bleachers need a million dollars worth of maintenance? Aren't they inspected every year or two? Isn't there a law that they have to be inspected every one or two years?
The information we received over the last year and a half has been that a very deficient system over there. There's many things that have been deleted and fixing, whether they, I think, I think they do a very good job of keeping up with them as they go, but there's a lot of things that we saw pictures of that are just not per, probably not per code anymore, is my guess. But what we're told is we have to repair those bleachers and some may be a little bit more drastic than just fixing the handrail, fixing a bench, it may be more of the structure underneath it.
There is, there's some foot foundation issues that need to be addressed that's starting to sink down, they may be shorted up a little bit, they have to put pressure on them, it's all those systems and that compromise in the structure of the bleachers as well. So some structural issues.
So the reason the price is a little higher as well, we just don't know a lot of details of what specific it is.
So it's the visitor side that needs the upgrades?
More, more of it.
More. Again, that was probably the, Lori, the thirty years ago.
And of course, in all cases, as we evaluate it further, if we find out that's much cheaper, obviously that doesn't cost you a hundred thousand at that point, right?
Right.
Can I ask a question? Sarah, what do you have to? So if we choose not to do the turf right now, how do you set up the infield so that in the future, if you decide to, is it wide enough for enough space for, if you decide to turf it, so that you can play a soccer match on the inside? Is that, does that come with a nine lane track and it's all laid out that way?
Yep, as we, as we put the track in, we'd be master planning for turf in the future to make sure that goes in the size.
Field was put in.
We were just talking, was it ninety-two that the field was put in, but then I don't think.
No, it was, because we started playing games up here, the first class to graduate from the current middle school was nineteen seventy-five, and we were playing football games up here certainly by then, and I think maybe, I can't remember exactly, but nineteen seventy-five, I should.
At that current stadium?
So I don't know fifty years of compassion, just from weather.
But they did, they did maintain it very well with aerating and seeding and irrigation and hauling and.
I mean, just weather alone is going to, is going to pack your.
And I don't know what upgrades they did in two thousand two, in two thousand one to it.
You'd have to physically.
I don't know. But they did, they never re, they didn't ever put sod down or reseed or anything, because it has not been rebuilt. I don't think so.
And that just becomes an injury issue.
I was told it has not.
And you don't think so, Lori?
I don't think so.
Yeah, I don't know what we did then, and we did some of it, but it was never stripped and redone, for sure.
Yeah, and the number we threw out there earlier is total rebuild, right? It's all the way down, the drainage rebuilt and the drainage back up, so it's not just re-sodding or seeding.
That two million, you're saying?
No, that four hundred thousand dollar number I threw out there earlier.
So the four hundred thousand, that would revamp the grass.
Yep, that's correct, the drainage.
So that's four hundred instead of two million. Do you have more questions, Lori?
I don't think so, thank you.
Shannon? Just to be clear, so we're looking at these three tonight, does that mean we're not looking at the gym anymore or the baseball fields at this time? You don't want to try to package it? That's your, that's your recommendation?
I guess I, I want to put an asterisk by my recommendation. I mean, do I think there's still needs? Yes, as we've kind of heard from school perceptions and from our last meeting, I think we have to be willing to make some concessions initially.
I think that's a really good thing to bring up, though, because I think we're looking at this, what we have, and saying, okay, look at the synthetic turf, that's, that's two million, which, when you look at the four dollars per one hundred thousand, I'm thinking, what will that be, like a quarter? I'm sorry to put it that, but then we have to go back to look at all the stuff we've just taken off the board, because I think that we're taking off that, an entire question. So I think as we're looking at all of these items, one through fifteen, we just took off one whole huge piece of that.
Yeah, I guess.
So I'm glad that you brought that up, because I think right now we're looking at this, but let's not forget, when we go back to, we are listening to things, because we're taking off an entire, we're taking off the basketball, we're taking off the baseball fields. I mean, those are things that, if we weren't listening and not looking at how those went, we would have all of these things here.
Yeah, I don't want to rehash, because we've already talked, but I mean, that, someone who's been at the schools and seen the high school kids practicing down at the middle school and sharing a gym with eighth grade, fifth grade, and then after a seventh and sixth in the same space, I mean, that is, it's a need.
Yeah, we have kids practicing at six A M. right now.
Yeah, and as a board, we are saying, that's not a high enough need, because it won't pass through the community. So yeah, we are taking that whole chunk right off of here. And then we're also now trying to look at these and pull these down to listen to the community to say, what do we support here to try to get these needs, the rest of these needs that gets addressed? The twenty-two numbers we are, and that's, that's what I keep falling back on, is that's what school perception said, and I get, I get it, the numbers were off on that survey, but that's what the survey said. And that's why I keep trying to get as close to that as possible. We have public comment tonight saying, spend the money like it's coming out of your pocket, and I keep hearing that. And I just want anybody to know, like, I do, I consider that completely. And I get the quarter, but for some people, quarters a lot, and the community said it's too much, and I want to be respectful of that as best I can.
I just know some people are against turf. I'm not entirely sure why.
I told you, it's, I'll bring it up, it's a COVID conversation. Either you, you think it's real or you think it's fake. And no matter what you think, you're going to think that until you're blue in the face and find every supportive document, and the other way, you're going to find every supportive document. That's what I think can hear, because even, you know, even the NFL is saying now, it's, you know, people are getting hurt and the players are saying they can get hurt. As someone who played on it, I don't know if you ever got more hurt on it, I, I never got hurt on turf.
Well, there's been a change. We had to address the last time, too, the turf has changed over time.
That's not the same turf roll, and that's.
Those are all the carpet on Calgary.
A lot of the people that are saying that it was, turf is not the same as it was twenty years ago.
So I, I mean, I think there's ways in here to get real close to this twenty-one and a half million dollars by not remodeling the existing space. So if we're looking at like our own house, what can we get away with? I can leave my auditorium as is, get the new one, you know, we can, and maybe move that back up to the P A. and the scoreboard, because those are addition, in my mind, those additional items we need. And then you keep it as grass, as much as I don't want, I'd love to have the turf field, but that's a fundraiser meeting. Over the next couple of years, if we really need this, want this, I don't know, that just might take two, but I don't know what, if you need a number from us tonight, or if you just need to say, you think we can ask one question?
We'll need both. I mean, so it's a combination of one question or two. Generally, what do you want to put into the one or two questions? And what's the budget?
Bruce, I know we keep talking twenty-two, that's, I said option B, I mean, I would support going to that, especially with understanding that, okay, at twenty-five point five million, it was four dollars per hundred thousand. So I think, what's the value of my house? We're at twenty-three, five, or two million under. I know it's going to be under four dollars. That's, I would go up a little bit, because I think that, I think the community just needs to understand what it's going to cost them on an annual basis. Twenty-two is the tested number, but I, I do think we got to do the the multipurpose room, just finish that off, remodel, but I would cut the turf and go grass. I mean, in here, we have an all or none on these bleacher options. So I'm being difficult, hybridating some of these options, you know, be hopeful on some of that.
Because again, that's the worst case, the bleacher, right?
That's a mess.
Could come in on her.
Well, we can also prioritize the highest need maintenance and highlight this is not being addressed, this is a mess, and we plan for that for the future.
Because I, I, that was also another one that, again, if you want to go perception, looking at the bleachers for twenty years, yeah, but if you go up in them, are they weather checked and are they, can need some maintenance to them? Yes, they do. A full, a million dollar complete upgrade to that and even a rebuild of the box, I think we could, I mean, it almost looked like the one million to upgrade the bleachers could be press box, bleachers.
What's the press box like?
Which one?
I don't, I don't know.
Plywood and busted side windows and a couple stools?
Yep, that's good.
I mean, that one's been there since ninety-two, the one on the, the other side, at least.
Visitor's side.
Yeah, the visitor's side.
And I think anybody who's been to a football game knows that we need the P A. system. I mean, that's not a.
Well, we brought this forward up a couple of years ago. P A. system is, well, it makes sense to me.
I think the other just piece of discussion is, and school perception's really brought this up, is one question or two questions. You know, I think it's a gamble either way, how you, do you want to do it all in one question? Or are you saying, you know, I, I think even looking at our last referendum, we kind of thought, oh, if question one passes, then would you do question two? Well, it's not worded that way, and question two actually had more yes votes than question one. So.
I think it's the one question.
Thinking of, do we word it all as one question, or do we divide it up into two questions? And how would you do that? Do you do all of the maintenance as a question that was needed? I mean, you say all is needed, but the maintenance at the schools is not, you know, and do the second question, or what are people's thoughts on one or two?
I think one question to say that we scaled back on the original scope and we have our priorities in one question.
I'd like to, can I make a motion?
Yeah.
I would like to make a motion that we have one question for maintenance at the elementary, not to exceed six million, six thousand. And question two, to be a performing arts center, not to exceed twelve eight seven seven five. And rebuild the track, replace the electronic scoreboard and P A. system. Do whatever repair we need on the grass field and whatever maintenance we need on the bleachers, not to exceed, I think around twelve million, but I'd have to add it all up again.
So you're saying not to remodel the, the multipurpose space?
Correct.
So that takes out the multipurpose space that takes out the synthetic field turf?
And it also takes out rebuilding the press box.
Is there a second on Lori's motion? Motion is not, motion is denied. Is there any other discussion or motions that you'd like to?
I would make a motion to accept. Option A, taking out the number twelve synthetic turf and adding in thirteen, the grass and upgrading.
Kind of clarify, would that be the same as option B then?
Option B, then you have to add four hundred thousand.
Add, right.
So it'd be twenty-three.
Right, is that right?
Well, it's the same thing, but it, you have to add in.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I heard you right. You'd remove the turf?
I'd remove the turf and put in the repair of the current field.
And you'd keep the, rebuilding the press box?
How bad a shape is that in? Is there any way to repair it or upgrade it rather than totally rebuild it?
So I, we have been, it, I don't know a better way to say it, it's a disaster.
I'm sure that is.
Yeah.
I guess I leave that in then.
Marge, do you have a total then that would, logic? Would it be the twenty-three, four, nine, zero, plus four hundred thousand?
Are you, so you'd leave in?
So it'd be option B, essentially with forty thousand to repay.
Thousand.
What was that? Four D.
B plus four hundred.
B plus four hundred. So twenty-three, eight, ninety for grass.
Okay.
If that's what she's motioning, I would second that. Option B, plus the rebuild of just the grass.
So your total will be twenty-three, eight, ninety, seven, fifty?
Yes.
So Marge made a motion, Matt seconded, discussion on that motion?
So you're having one question with everything in it? And if it doesn't pass, we do not maintain the elementary school. And we just had another seventeen thousand dollar bill at the elementary school on H V A.
Is that a question or a comment?
It's a comment.
Okay. So as of now, the motion stands of B as one question, but adding that repair. Other comments with, and I will, piggybacking off of Lori's comment with that maintenance piece?
I get it.
I know this is where the.
I do, I just.
Almost twenty-four million.
If you wanted to be at a twenty-three, five, we could look at the bleacher repairs and prioritize and say, do less repairs there, deal with the most critical to cover the cost of the field. deal with the most critical to cover the cost of the field replacement to keep it at 23.5.
So you have, you have 1.5 million in the rebuild, press box, and bleacher upgrades. So yours, I was right, I was close to yours, except I was taking that, basically $750,000, I was cutting that in half and saying, we gotta somehow get our bleachers and the press box upgraded for 750, instead of the 1.5 million. You know, that at least would structurally should make them functional.
And we also really talked about the press box, different things getting, if there could be sponsorship, if there could be... I'm with, I'm really going back and forth between one or two questions. I think that that's where I'm really stuck, is having, with discussion with Marge and Matt's motion, as far as keeping it as one or having maintenance as one and having the rest as a second question. That's where I'm really torn.
Hmm, true.
I am concerned that we still have enough naysayers that they're gonna say no to the whole thing, and then, and with Lori, we're out of luck with the maintenance in the elementary school. You know, I, I know we have support from the community on making sure that maintenance is taken care of, that our kids are safe in the school. I think the number is still reasonable though, putting them together, you know, I do believe we'll get the support, but if we don't break it apart, I think we're just gonna have a no across the board.
At $6 million, Dave, what is that for an increase? So on that question, is that, or does that get iffy for us, or is it even an increase?
What are you asking about tax impact?
If you just have a question.
Tax impact for $100,000 for $6 million.
A lot of decrease, a lot of people... Matt says a buck.
Yeah, it's, there's a different...
It's the...
So I think that, yeah, so what's gonna happen is that question is gonna show a decrease.
And this is where, this is where we went, this is where we, we had such a hard time at the last one, because people were like, oh, if this is only four, then why, I mean, it didn't, it's not just that cut and dry, and I think, I can explain it, I...
Which is the, which is the only reason I'm leaning towards one question, because we can say, this is how much it's gonna cost you. There is no if this, then this, there's no decreasing tax, it's, this is how much it's gonna cost you based on the value of your house. But I also get it, and if there's a way to structure that, that message, then I support two questions, but we gotta do it right.
We have four months to get that messaging out.
I just, I think it takes us right back to, people are gonna say, we told you no, here you are with two questions, and you're trying to pull something over on us, and it's not the case, but I, I fully understand Lori's concern.
Further discussion?
We have a motion on the table.
Yep. So we'll do a roll call vote. Right now, the motion on the table is option B with the addition of number 13, which would include the repair of the existing grass field, which takes us roughly at 23... Five?
23, 8.
Eight, okay.
23, 9. Before we make a roll call vote, I think, I'd like to just cut a million off of that with, and just put the number at 22, 9, because if we go 750, we cut those in half on the bleachers, and then that gets us down to 750, 23, 1? 1, and then, it's still, I mean, remodeling of the multipurpose room, you only have $450,000 to remodel that room, not $682,000 to remodel that room. You know, I mean, just looking at that, like, I'm just trying to think even bigger, you know, this is only, this isn't even $2 million less, and people said no, okay, now we're over $2.5 million less, and again, just going back to, what can we get away with? Yes, we should upgrade that space somewhat, but it's minimal, we should get the bleachers upgraded, but it's not the whole brand-new bleachers, I mean, again, trying to listen to everybody, I'm just saying...
So are you...
I would be...
Amending it, or are you saying...
I would, that's just me, and if I don't think, but I'm just trying to get this, if we can get this to 20, 22, 9, you know, it looks, the number looks better, we're close to that 22 million, which we had support in. That's what I think.
Do you want to amend the motion?
I...
Not to exceed 22.99?
Yeah, and that, I guess that's how I'm getting there for you guys as well.
Okay.
Is it possible?
They can draw.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
They're the best of the...
Look at the bleacher repairs, look at the press box, look at the multipurpose renovations, scale back a little bit on those to make sure that you kind of...
So will you reamend the, will you amend?
I'll amend for one question, I'll amend, or, I don't know, however I say it, make an amendment to the motion for one question, not to exceed 22.9 million. I will second that.
Any further discussion? Okay, we will do a roll call vote, you don't have to vote on the...
We're just voting on the amendment.
The amendment, okay. Um, Marge?
Yes.
Cherie?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Matt?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Lori?
No.
Okay, motion carries 7 to 1.
The amendment carries, now you...
The amendment carries.
Now you have to vote on the amended motion.
So we will now vote on the amended motion, sorry, a lot of different amendments, we'll do another roll call vote. Marge?
Yes.
Cherie? Bruce?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Matt?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Lori?
No.
Okay, motion carries 6, 1. Okay, so we will take that.
Let me just clarify that I have, so one question, not to exceed 22, 9, and then we'll work on kind of fine tuning. I'll bring back the ballot language in January, I'll certainly give you an update before then, but formally, we'll bring it back to that meeting for formal approval on the ballot language.
Okay.
And you will be able to get us an updated, a little closer tax impact?
Okay.
At 22.9?
That one question, you'll be looking at the project as a whole, so during design, it's when you'll be looking at all these different numbers, and it may adjust a little bit here or there to stay within the 22, so it's all part of the design process.
21, 9 is even better.
Oh, absolutely.
We'll take that, I sharpen the pencil.
Okay.